Remember we had a multi lingual reading.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, it is January ninth at three o'clock, so we should call the sports at the so order. We're putting roll call starting at this and that's okay. And as a reminder, we go all the way around the table for our other sessions to bring you back up to the server.
Um, my name is. Uh, Jeff Baker, executive director of Seemly dated technology services.
Hello, Eric Dugan of HR.
Andrew Mon, director of special education.
Allison Dino, executive director of multilingual services on pre K twelve.
Everybody Scott with that chief academic officer.
Main sample, that's my daughter.
Hey, Larson, just give five.
Uh, I've got enough of the energy for him. Part of where I'm producing one.
Right, I think so, or later.
And then so.
Oh, yes, now we have the director of the meeting for the week. They started with that one song there. Um, thanks for your view, we don't want to table any other capital thing when I do it. But I think we really at least try to set the tone for hopefully these meetings for you, which is a bit more casual. Can we get I love um, to the place? Um, so welcome to our dance to referring us like they're virtually uh, so referring us virtually. Um, also wanted to give not to put you know this by this, but I tend to be going in your show here also already. Just say.
Oh, uh, and that's that's the way I'm about to see this for our.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, so we'll move on to our public comments. Um, kind of the agenda, so um, this is something we wanted to ensure was still in place at our work sessions. Um, so that folks have opportunity prior to us getting into the conversation to offer anything that they might want. So if you are here, we're in a virtually annual uh, public comment, you can do so by using that raise hand feature or typing your name in chat. We've got just a few minutes to do that. All right, seeing none, go ahead and move on to uh, kind of meat of our agenda. Uh, beginning with the equity and the empathy um, situation, great. Uh, hello, everybody, it's uh, glad to see everybody, Senator Center uh, for me. Uh, hope everyone had a restful uh, break. Um, I know that there have been uh, a lot of renewal and recognition and also some work now. I forgot to that, so uh, I'm just giving a little bit of information, especially for our newest board members. Uh, one of the goals during our work sessions is to actually uh, review the strategic plan. The strategic plan was adopted uh, and finalized uh, first round of August. It was based on a previous work that had been done with community engagement and some other outside entities that the staff decided to come together and finalize the document. Uh, this is the first year of that, it might uh, give us some time in the spring to do some few revisions on this department. But one of the things that we felt was really important was to highlight each of the goals, areas. So we've already done a pretty overview of the entire strategic plan in the fall, and we already talked through relationship with one of the goals. We will this month review the strategic plan and goal of empathy and empathy. And we will come back together in uh, March and then do high expectations the next month for long. And then in April, we do engaging orders. And then the plan is in May is that we spend some time and really recapping and looking at all our progress. Uh, how we did, what were the challenges, where are the success points, and where do we go from there? So that's the plan moving forward to kind of get along with that. And then next slide please. Um, and then uh, just one of the marks that we started with the principles in the front level was how do we ensure alignment? How do we share alignment with the district schools? How do we look at the metrics, how are we in our private monitor? And then how do we do that with the school improvement plan? This is uh, people go back, this is the school improvement plan. And then since we have really intentional equity work, how do we wrap around the equity work and then that living our school improvement plan? And the strategic plan, and that's work that's ongoing. Uh, we actually have a meeting uh, this week uh, with Dr. Rogers Guard, who's our equity facilitator. Uh, they are meeting with the principals and actually all the EDPs uh, coming up ideally this this Friday or next? Next, best week, next week, where they're going to be meeting as a team to really uh, what does this actually look like in real time? And how we ensure that all of these things, these these three entities are all working together seamlessly? So that's something they're continuing to do and draft out. Uh, because we're trying to make sure that the work of equity and anti racism then involved them. So um, that's the goal. And next one. And then just, these are the four desired outcomes under um, empathy and empathy. Uh, that are highlighted on the district website. Um, and these are the metrics that we will be looking at and what will be of having that as a team. Would all be a more um, more open we have around where we are in terms of progress or what the next steps are. There are things that we identified as space that we have to double down on as a as a district. Uh, so just to let you all know, these are all aligned to the correct core colorings that we have. Uh, and we are trying to make sure that we are being intentional and of course, hear from the board. Uh, and the student asks if there is any um, any wonder or any things that I want that we need to be thinking, especially if we're talking about maybe we need suggestion revisions to the plan moving forward for next year, we want to hear from you what you're thinking and actually is actually for going down into schools. All right, next slide please. All right, so this is the first one, and I am actually going to have to respond to the team. Uh, so that they can present on this topic, uh, this is the goal desired outcome. Staff will know students by name, strength, culture, and need, which will all contribute to a sense of belonging. And then I will pass this on to the female team that they taught us after this call.
Alright, so um, for equity and empathy, um, our desired outcome, which is regarding the strategic plan, staff will know students by name, strength, culture, and need, which ultimately contributes to a sense of belonging. We're going to use our um, EDS survey, which is produced by our CDE partners, Owen W. For uh, gauging this particular initiative. Um, this is a yearly um, survey that we do with parents, students, and staff. And we have a trend of probably about seventeen years at this point um, of of trend data. Um, and we have expanded the survey over time to include the uh, SEL uh, components that the whole team worked on and embedded in the survey talk, I think about three years ago. Yeah, um, so it's very comprehensive, um, it is part of the title one requirements uh, that are required our school districts to get input on on certain aspects of the school, and this survey does um, give that mark. Um, so for twenty-three, twenty-four, our goal to improve um, sixty-seven percent um, in the spring to to spring twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, to seventy-two percent in spring twenty twenty-four. And we are looking at our belongingness and identity only from student surveys uh, for this particular uh, for this particular goal. The current, the current strategic plan language requires previous goals. Um, the percentage of students responding positively on the center of of our CDE and EDS student uh, survey in the area of belonging and ending will improve from seventy-two uh, to in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two to more than seventy-seven in twenty-two and twenty-three. So um, we're trying to again move it from improved from sixty-seven this year to seventy-two out of the spring this coming year. The survey is issued to students starting in um, we usually get them going around April. And we provide at least a month for students, staff, and um, families to get the survey. That's a little background understood, right?
Okay, next slide.
Okay, um, so I'll make your progress and next steps on this one. Um, so we did reach our goal uh, more than seventy percent by twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three last year. Uh, it was the baseline is sixty-seven that we're starting out with this year, when with the district established um, as an annual improvement goal. Um, schools are working to enhance the community, community climate and actions like positive behavior systems and supports uh, providing clarity and consistency of school expectations, focusing on the reason why and structuring classroom time for more opportunities for students to engage with each other to build positive mutual supportive relationships. Um, each building is uh, addressing these through different strategies, and uh, I think they're having uh, a lot of success doing that. When school school improvement plans are reviewed and revised each year, uh, they will study relevant data to assess growth in the area and adjust plans as needed to make continue this growth. So we'll be in evaluation on each of these strategies at the end of the year to see, and then we'll look at the data to determine how well we did.
Yeah, and just for the for the just community to know, so the principals, we get the data by the pool. Then they get a great help, so they get to know where their pocket areas are, where the strengths are within there, they have the entire G N uh, from the district in terms of monitoring and definitely we're using this specific question we pulled out of the C D data. One component that we're actually establishing their model of district. And it is important to know that uh, that it did go down, right? So we know we can reassess that and we're still, we believe that the work they're doing, uh, all the bringing around culture climate, the sort of data points around these focus areas, we're hoping that they will be um, that the interview will have better results as as efforts that we've done this year in terms of professional development coaching um, all around school culture climate um, and um, learning in the last year. So I guess it's a good type of questions from the board or comments.
I would add that students in grade four and twelve, the ones that participate in this particular survey.
First of all, do we have a copy of the survey in the side?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good to see. My second question is, do we identify individually somebody who's doing it well? Or is this, is it just something in the blankets, kind of like by school or by fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, or?
You can do it by uh, you can do it, I do not believe you can isolate specific classrooms, but you can do it by grade level, you can do it by ethnicity. Um, I think that's as far as it goes in terms of slicing the data to take a look at it. Um, yeah.
And what would you define as doing it well? So when we have, when we have this um, these goals here, what is the example that somebody that is doing this? What we're asking you to reach that goal, that would, that would uh, I mean, what does that look like?
Well, I obviously want, we want to reach our goal this year of uh.
How do we, how, how does somebody, so I, I'm a teacher or somebody are in there and I'm getting looked at and surveyed, right? Of how I'm doing in here, how do I, how do I know that I'm reaching the goal that you're asking the way that I'm doing? You know, how, how do I get those, those marks?
That would be um, that would be feedback from the school administrator uh, doing observations in the classroom. Um, observations are part of the evaluation procedure. Um, principals have to observe each teacher for sixty minutes, and it's even extended for some. Um, that would be something that a school leader would point out in that observation and give him kudos, kudos, or give him some pointers or some other strategies to address those types of things.
Sixty minutes per year?
Yes, yes. And those um, and uh, those particular strategies are being presented at the schools on an ongoing basis. So by following up and doing the observations, we're going to be able to know which teachers are being effective and which ones aren't being effective. And then principals have all sorts of strategies such as uh, if a teacher's struggling in that area, they might send them over to do some, some coaching or some shadowing of another teacher, uh, veteran teacher versus a new teacher, it could be like Bertha. Uh, there's lots of strategies to spread good um, instructional and client strategies throughout the building.
I will add that that's required for formal observation, that the expectation is that every classroom is observed on the basis.
Month.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so there's informal observations, and then there's one, which is required through our state evaluations.
So a teacher, Charlie Simpson says, is getting written down that by students, you know, that I'm not doing a good job. So then the next step is the principal is going to then help intervene and put me, get me back on some sort of program to to help and then do that. I'm just kind of, I'm just trying to understand how we're going to reach our goal down to the actual, what makes well do for for young people, right? You know, is that's what we're trying to affect, correct? So then how do we get it all the way down, run to the classroom, cause we do that.
Right, I think the, the, the school leaders one way, uh, we also have mentors, and there's one here, Ian, uh, who works with teachers on a variety of strategies. And so that's another kind of in with the teacher that would need some assistance or some, some more strategies and practice. Um, but those are really, those are really the two um, the two strategies. You kind of introduce the strategies and then you follow up with informal and formal observations throughout the year. Uh, if a teacher's really struggling, then um, there's some other options actually.
Um, can we add a little more to, to what Mr. Baker is saying? Uh, in the school improvement plans, some of the things they discover, they write in terms of strategies, like here it says desired outcome. Staff will know students by name, um, strength, culture, and need. At all of our uh, administrators participated in um, what's called an empathy map exercise over the course of the last school year, where they, we asked them to get to know some individual students around, what were their, what were their strengths, what were their interests, all of like the all of what it makes up to be a person, because a student is more than just a student in a math class or just a first grader learning to read. Um, and so that strategy of using empathy maps to build connections with kids is something we shared with them, and then they can share with their school staffs to use during the school year so that it trickles all the way through for students. Other strategies within their um, school improvement plans are around their different uh, PBIS component. Sometimes students are highlighted for um, demonstrating different com- different things that in terms of the school. I know Tuck Willa in particular does a really nice job of demonstrating their, celebrating their student growth and what they're doing. The survey question, when you look at them specifically on the CE, there's not one question that says, do you feel like you belong? There's a series of questions, and so within those questions at each school, if there's something where there's a particular strength or an area of weakness or relative weakness, they can develop strategies around those. Teachers and principals share them. When they're developing their steps, they do a lot of work with this at the start of the school year, because that's how you're setting culture for the remainder of the year. And then they're checking in, as you see on here, school improvement plans are even revised at the midway point of each school year. So it's not just, are we seeing them in a formal evaluation setting, although that's part of it with whether or not students are feeling a sense of belonging, but how are the different components we're doing during the year? Are teachers um, visible in the hallways, like during passing periods, that type of? Those are some of the other like small pieces, I don't know, because you have this has other things to add.
I would just say that also like there's training throughout the year and um, you know, social emotional development and relationship lifting is is embedded within that, within staff meetings, within any kind of individual or group professional development, individual coaching session, those kinds of things and connecting on, you know, student engagement, especially um, from a special education perspective, it's often in a conversation around students who might be exhibiting challenging behaviors, like, well, what are we doing to build the relationship with that student so that we can, you know, engage them more better, those kinds of things. And and that's ongoing and in formal settings and trainings as well as with normal coaching sessions.
Um, okay, a few thoughts, questions? Um, so you know, you, you, you identify these strategies that are, that are being done. Um, so the strategies that teachers are doing are specific to the individual teacher, right? Not necessarily a school-wide strategy that everybody is including with their classrooms.
They could be, but.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea about where those school-wide are any ready to be placed?
Yeah, um, one thing I can name is um, just in a first school year here, we are working on with principals and ed app applying um, to teachers and to make it consistent, is something very simple but really powerful as far as student developing belonging. A lot of the belonging field of belonging is like people even know who you are and know what matters to you. Um, part of that is in classrooms, having kids have more opportunity to work together in a project-based learning. Just simple like a turn and talk, something basic, share something about yourself, and as you work together on projects, you become better at the skill of the task, but also you know each other better. And when kids feel like they're known and the other kids don't treat them enough, you know, putting weight, you're included, that builds a kid's sense of uh, belonging and um, you belong, you matter, we know you. So that's something we are, have begun this year with principal at our monthly meetings and trainings and practice on what that looks like. There are ways uh, besides sharing talk, the teachers can get more active and uh, engagement lesson. And the opposite would be like, I have a teacher, I'm just making an extreme example, but fifty minutes I lecture and then hand you a dinner to go and do it. That's the opposite of what we want to see. So it's lots of chance to process what they're learning while they're learning it. So it's good for content and knowledge, and it's good for relationships.
So I hope that this is kind of their transitional year, where then perhaps next year, or looking into next year, there will be those system type of drivers, maybe because they, we could talk about the type of relationships, right? Because what I think, you know, relationships is somewhat of a consistency, right? And particularly when you think about between a, a child and an adult, it's about how, knowing how you're gonna show up or be like, if we, right? Um, so I think that's going to be really important, that it's not just classroom specific, right? Because I have a little sense of safety and belonging in my classroom, but when I walk out of the hallway and how like that change? We don't have those school-wide um, strategies to support. Um, I think it would also be really great, right? Well, I think surveys are a great way, and with our goal around this survey, and and that's wonderful. But I also think it would be really interesting to develop some ideas about what does it really look like? How many people I hate when they feel that's unbelonging and ethnic, right? So then we're actually looking for evidence of that on a more ongoing basis and not just how they respond to the survey, particularly knowing that um, this survey isn't like for, you said for third twelve, right? So we've got kindergarten preschoolers through third grade that we don't really have a way of measuring their belongingness. Um, I also think just kind of our future, thinking about like these presentations, it'd be useful when we're talking about marketing bits and relationships, maybe as a survey, maybe even having uh, listed out questions that that circle up to give us that total score. Um, because I know that can help me in knowing, you know, we got that, you know, a while ago, but I can't remember who was on there. Um, that that kind of, I don't, you know, that's probably glitter, that are um, there was in the survey. I think one other thought is, do we have a definition, a shared definition of culture? And what we mean by culture, right? Because there are different layers to culture, and so when, when that's our goal, to say, no, I name, need, culture, it was not in order. But what does that mean, right? It's more than just like the culture around the food that you eat, right? That may be a particular, you know, important part of our kind of shallow or surface culture. What does it really look like? What does that mean? And where are we actually asking them to know about young people as it relates to their culture, I think that would be really interesting. I think that part of the work around the racial, like the vocabulary around what is culture, what is inclusion, right? What is diversity? Uh, that's what we have to end that this connectedness with the equity work we're doing, because we have to be on the same page about that. Sorry, because I, uh, what, what does it mean to be culture responsive? I'm sure if I, if I ask ten people here, I would have ten admissions around that. So what I'm interested in is really grappling with, what is the influence of this very definite of culture, right? Or what does it mean to be culture responsive? What does that mean when you put up the diversity, to me, diversity means, this is a different one. I think about diversity for, for example, who's in one whole around workforce. It, it's not, for me, it's like, what is that a connection to the student body? But I think the students, and what our current student body is, should be represented of the type of diversity, the representation. So that's something we can get at, and that was on there, but I guess it would not be. I'm afraid, no. For I understand.
One thing, the school-wide issue um, that you mentioned is super important. And Dr. Dino and uh, Director Vaughn are co-leading an initiative just getting started on MTSS multi-tiered systems of support. And part of that is also PBIS, you're using that other acronym, positive behavior interventions and support. And they go together, as that becomes a school-wide plan, so we're working on a two-way overall structure. Still leaving last year for personal, you know, schools are individual entities, but there are certain things we feel like it should be in place everywhere. So we're developing that and engaging school staff to build an understanding of what it is and create structures for each school. It won't be immediate, but the process is underway.
So I'm curious, um, students, what you guys think of um, of this concept of belonging, and I, you know, when I look at the, the data went down, which is not surprising. I mean, during, during COVID, you know, everybody was separated, and now you're kind of coming back together. And I'm just curious about what your sense of um, do you think, you know, most students feel good about coming to school? And I know, I mean, it's kind of relative to before COVID, which was quite a number of years ago, and you guys are in different grades and stuff like that. I'm just curious about what you're, you know, I mean, do you think, you think like we're getting more students feeling like they're good, good coming to school? Or where are we currently in that?
I think it's definitely on a decline, I mean, not, not even just like after COVID, but ever since COVID, ever since you come back from COVID, a lot of like corrupted things have gone without limitation, like um, it, outcome used to be this big, I don't know, each very little, and just think that literally last year and this year, the senior class pretty much like two people showed up for a whole different person. I would hope so. You know, it's, it's a lot less, and it's not just our grade, I think as well, grades have a lot less application then in general. And I don't necessarily know what's causing that and how we have to fix it, but that's something I see is increasing where students don't want to, there's something stopping them from like reaching out with their student body and building more of that community, yeah.
Well, I, a lot of other women who we hear is like, I'm not, I'm going to try to be. And people is not, not pretty much, but because he doesn't mention impact and activity, like reasoning and acting like him. It's like more like a teacher kind of after like plus engagements, like a lot of some type of learning engage. Yeah, I guess that it has been like a cry.
Yeah, I think you guys would get some ideas about how to re-engage, that would be really helpful, that'd help.
Well, that's why I think forthwith the, in my group, right? About part of it, we're like, you have to work with the students to figure out how we, what needs to change, right? And how are the students, what needs to change?
And it's going to be talking to the students that, I mean, you guys are engaged, so talking to students that are not so engaged, going through their moments.
So just to let people know, we extended the student, we don't already have it over the break, so we're examining the month, Alex gave some good suggestions, a meeting with them on brackets so that we can figure out um, how to get more outreach. I'm going to be going to lunch runs instead of you know, with the flying machine, I'm going to try all of that, looking out for a bit. Because even getting people to sign up, right, and getting that message out, um, we have to think of different ways to do that. We have to, we have to sort of like a one way. So the agreement requires multiple ways to engage, I think, because everyone's different, right? So certainly it works for somebody, but it, but like direct, direct is works for other people. Or direct outreach and tapping is another thing you have to do too. Do you ever really, in school, do things that are in the middle classroom or school-wide, where the intent is just to be with each other, build community?
Yes, I, I know that they, it's usually very successful, because sometimes it ends up just getting the teacher um, talking about feeling like you should feel loved, but that is the students, and then after, you know, they say that's the rule of silence there. So maybe the approach of doing it, maybe four things, the first is just sit down in a circle and speak to each other. Who can, who are talking with their people with the, the best thing, because you know, people are bonded, I think. Um, but yeah, I think the, I think the, like the culture of going in with the bigger with the students, and it's I don't know why, but it's decreasing a lot. People have friends, people like, they're social, but they stick to their own kind of friendships, and usually don't, they don't try to branch out as much.
Yeah, because I wonder, I mean, just observing up there, you know, in terms of, you know, the, the holiday and Black Student Union came together really nicely in that activity. Um, I see the theater group kind of coming together, I see, you know, some of the athletic teams coming together, so I just kind of um, you know, there's, there's some other things, clubs, I don't know what it is, that some, that will attract students and.
It just makes you wonder, because like you said, for COVID, if you're in eighth grade, very cold, when you come up to freshman, sophomore, junior year, you know, reflecting back at the time, who was at school or school dances or homecoming, and they go in great activities, but you never. You know, reflecting back at the time, who was the school or school dances or home kind of, they go in great activities, but you never experience them. You never saw them or participated in them. How do you have, want to have people join them? They don't even know what that looks like. Or how do you even get, you know, get people to get excited about it? Because it doesn't matter, right? So how, you know, I think the challenge is going to be a whole, you know. Culture of young people that just don't have that experience in their bank to draw from. Or any type of activities, how do you then get them to want to, you know, even if it's not back to do whatever it is to be together, how do you get them to? To want to put that in the.
Yeah, and mental health, mental health is, you know, anxiety, social anxiety that COVID created. Those are real and um students, some students, you know, get so energized by coming back and connecting with people. But there's other students that really benefit and know it, right? Exactly. And so. So I also think it's also, as you know, thinking of new ways, not only like to re-engage and reteach like you're talking about. But also to be mindful that there might be some students, maybe before COVID, were willing to maybe engage passionately. But now they're not willing to because of the fact that they have serious anxiety. It is all food for thought for us to think through, like, that's why I'm actually really hopeful with the advisory group. Even if we focus twenty people, we do serve a ten or something, just to start thinking about these topics. Because um, maybe the students, how I think, everyone knows something, ethos really is the struggle, right? And so we open our heads together, think about how do we do this differently? And then it's about them initially adults. So it's why the common practices, the school recruiting plans, the F B teams, they have to be part of the solution. Because they, they keep doing what they always did, like they were the school before, we only did what we did. And then we wonder why no one's there. Well, it's because we're not doing the award, it'd be a hell of a party.
And there's, I think there's a possibility in the street data, there's databases that are used in there, getting down and focus using different things, so that can be helpful.
Yeah. Any other question from this topic or move to the next one? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to the next one. Um, equity and empathy, uh, next slide.
So this one, our desired outcome here in our strategic plan, students will have access to high-quality classes exposed to a variety of potential careers. So we were in the um, black and next bullet area, we looked at the specific indicator of participation in these particular programs. And then we were looking at um proportional uh participation. Um, for some, some of these groups of students who are part of our gap that we're wanting to go. So we looked at lining our representation for students with I E Ps in special education programs. Um, multi-legal learners and those who experience homelessness, and that's three groups. And their participation in advanced placement to be uh honors classes, highly capable and future educator program. Um, full of representation. So that, those were the indicators we're specifically looking at.
I'm curious, oh yeah, how is the future educator program, how is that part of? What honors, highly capable, that seems like a top line. Um, that's, that's, so my understanding as a program that's being, that's right, an environmental science program or kind of that education something, but. It doesn't sound, it sounds to me like CTE programs as opposed to others.
Yeah, it's not, right, it's not entirely connected to the other ones. I think the point there would be um programs that maybe have maybe felt exclusionary. The students and so it's part of the inclusion of a future educator, educators, or receiving students for a variety of demographics. Who are um being encouraged or considering education as a career. And that's why I think that's part of what we're looking at for these indicators, for these programs, which I agree with you, it's it's not as tight and.
Okay, so so just to add you, it would encourage more diversity in my program.
Yes.
It makes sense if you, you know, you're, you're probably, I don't know, are you in the sector of people now?
How about it?
Of the environment and science, yeah, okay.
I think the, 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 like, the kind of um benefits and skill that started from that could often get over what, like. So just small scale of being like, I, I, students being able to, because basically they join a classroom. To the teacher to do whatever it is that um, the the teacher of that classroom, that they get to talk with. Um, and then the small things of being like, oh yeah, I was able to like sit down with the both tenants to it. And then if one was like, the outline, I was able to like, roll up it. Just those such small things, but if I think. Bringing that later on until adulthood and other jobs, that's such a valuable skill regarding the intellectual position.
Yeah.
And the future educator program, actually the students on the exit of the program, because we just talked about the Y S P age. Actually, and that was significant, with the parent educator program, making the uh, again, parent here uh credentials. So that they can be higher and part of the goal of having, uh, and I would say education, as you all know, when we think of the majority of our educators. They do not represent our student population. And so this is the way to ensure access for our students. They have access to these types of programs so that they can be honored for their degrees to teach their programming, that that actually records to. And that have to speak different languages, um, students, students who are students with I E Ps. Uh, they plan lessons, they have the environmental education program, they work in our elementary schools. There's a lot of highly educated skills within this program. And we want to make sure that this represents our values, our own access and opportunity within the future educator program. Can we really wear um, students who participate in that and um to pursue the, you can get that data, it will also have other students in their program.
Yeah, it's our first year.
But we're all this year, the first year of the.
It's our first year. But what's set up long-term tracking, that would be very valuable information.
Yeah.
So if you're, and so I'm reading this right, so we're trying to just get early access to the honors type of people, you know, we're gonna go that route. So how are we servicing with the students then? Do we have like actual program or individual one-on-one? How, how, I want to be in the honors program, how, and see students, how do I get there? You know, what support is that in place outside of what we're already giving, so that I can reach that? Especially if I have learned this book or something, what does that look like for this year?
So, so we're a part of the um inclusionary practices project through WASA this year. And I'd say that to say, we as a system need to shift from some more exclusionary practices. Where kids would get pulled to do something or removed to teach a skill somewhere else. To more universally designed learning experiences for students so that all students can access. The uh whatever content or curriculum is being instructed in a local, in its first, in a specific spot. So, for example, in an algebra class, we want every student to have access to grade level curriculum. And their access points are going to look different for different students for a variety of reasons. We have joined um this particular opportunity in order to increase our toolkit as a school district, provide for more inclusive activities. We can't, if we rely on intervention, whether it's before school, after school or during the school day. We aren't going to get there where we're going to have more representation in these um in a variety of programs. We want every student to be able to access honors or advanced placement. Or if they choose to join a future, this future educator group or other different um C T E or so that's a. It's a path we're starting and our vision is that our classrooms will be inclusive so that every student has the ability to. Access and show us what they know. And then this also connects back to idea of belonging and identity as kids can talk about their whole selves and. Um, show us what they know, then we're able to learn from each other too. Andrew, do you have any things to add about?
No, up outside of just making sure like that you all have an understanding of like universal design for learning and that we're. You know, when we're creating, teachers are creating their lessons and and programming and plans, they're they're looking at what are the needs of all of my students? And how do I incorporate that into my lesson planning instruction? Um, so you're, you know, building to the edges versus the middle. And so that then all students can have more access there. And so by focusing on inclusionary practices, we are then. By default, focusing on making sure that most stu- students have access to information around resources of how to get to where they want to go.
So what's happening now currently, I just like I need to, that that we're not doing, what does that look like compared to where we wanted it?
I would think you presented this at the, we went through all of that. And we showed this, the board and the community that um our practices, I would say around, especially specifically on these, example, multilingual learners. Um, many of our multilingual learners were not getting access to grade level curriculum. So they were in U K R classes or E L classes, the multilingual classes, um sometimes in a separated classroom. Um, for the same time years. And so what we're doing now is reevaluating, we reevaluated all of that last year. And and so now the goal is to make a shift as a system to change uh the focus. So that's P professional development for all of our teachers. Recreating this theme so that the students are actually placed in general education classrooms and pushed and need. Instead of having students go, and this is not for every case, but some students still, some students still need. A smaller environment and specialized instruction, but the goal is instead of having kids leave. For example, you're teaching a class, you're teaching algebra, for example, what typically happens at L one three, for example? Kids who needed a service or multilingual classes or whatnot, were then actually left. And a little specialized vocabulary or whatever the teacher that I decided to search for or decided to teach or reinforce. So imagine you're the student and you're missing all of this information, you go out with this little side group and then you come back. And then you have to catch up with everything that you're missing. Uh, what we're saying is what we're trying to do is pull most of that in, right? And so in small groups. And in specialized instruction within the classroom where the students aren't missing anything and if they need extra support. But that actually happens embedded in that classroom. Uh, so for example, I remember when I taught for a break, I would do my instruction. And then what I would do is, um, then I, once the kids were starting daily homework, I would pull kids that I knew. That were needing a little bit more of direct instruction or more than I can pull inside. So there's different ways you have to see what needs now, but but we're trying to shift the culture to actually that is just a beginning for content. Getting standards and instruction and we build capacity within the classroom to support their need. Now, there will be exceptions, of course, but it's about the shift we're making and it's a big shift. And I would say the 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 movement response, for example, um. Uh, Dr. Dino had with the instructor, the instructional team at Foster, and they have redesigned um professional development format. For, you know, what does this look like? Coaching is an example, right? But it is a shift, you know. Um, not, there's still belief systems that we're working with as well, but. Uh, because what we learned is, or the data has shown over and over again, that our multilingual learners, our Latino students. Our students with I E Ps are not accessing to the level that we want. I don't think there's a lot more to see more data as well, but they're not getting um. Access to the core curriculum and therefore they have not been performing on the the measures that are testing. And it's all across the board. And if you look at correlation, when we look at highly capable, for example, the students, the target, if you want to take a target. Because it's a slow approach, the group that's suffering, the most are Latino students, mostly are Spanish speakers. And they also have a least access to highly capable. So how we shift all of that and move that over so that we actually are bringing their brilliance into the general education classroom. And given support and opportunities we're transforming as well. So it's it's not easy, it's not going to be fixed in one year, for sure. Um, but we actually have a plan to move forward and it's our shift of our entire culture we're talking about. So we'll say inclusionary practices, we're saying this is our district initiative. Inclusion for our multilingual learners, inclusion for our M K N T students, inclusion for our special education students. We, that is our whole, this is our big initiative as a district that we're working on and we're trying to ensure that everything we do, how we do our budget. How we do our classrooms, how we do our master schedules, we're flex that, but it is. It is a big time, because it's not, as you can imagine, doing that in five schools, it's not going to happen in one year. But we actually have a lot of promising practices, we have a lot of teachers that are already on board. And we have a lot of schools that are like, yeah, we can do this. And so, um, and even people who are like, well, I don't really know what this is, like in my grade level. We've come around and we said, we listen to the time that it is supporting, but it's new and it's a shift for all of us. Yeah. I think if I add anything.
I think that's great.
Yeah, it's, I think, and I could say, we have our students share their experience of being a multilingual learner. Our goal is, there, a lot of our students have the pre-learning, they've been educated in their, how do we, how do we take their brilliance? And really pull that in and build from their strengths versus looking at the children that have these deficits. And and we were working on building, they're not really taught the science, so we use a straight-based approach. But it's also going to be a lot of work, so. If that makes sense.
It does, and if I can, like, you get a child from a teacher, it's always, that's always positive.
Yeah, the teachers are, and the teachers have been, with so many teachers, that are just really embracing many of these changing practices. And I think we're going to get there. I just, it's going to take a little bit longer, but it's harder, I think, of the other ways with people. It's harder than it's, than to think about, be more deliberate, it just is. So that's the work we have to do. Right, let's go to the next slide to look at the data.
Yes, this this data table, as you see, it's the leftmost column shows the four programs you're talking about. The next column to the right, the first group of two, they're um bold outlined. That has to do with students who have I E Ps, the next group of two are um multilingual learners. And the final group of two columns is students experiencing homelessness. So we looked at here as a relative proportional representation, say, for example, the students with I E Ps. We looked at students with I E Ps who are enrolled in each of these four programs. The second of the two joining columns is percentage of general population and and with I E Ps. And you see many of our um, us, groups within um, the targeted groups, the, we have a number at the end. And the number of students fitting that specific criteria is fewer than ten, and ten is kind of standardized number to use. Fewer than that, um, is too, um, we're risking um. Uh, crossing by a student privacy of data, and so we want to preserve, we don't want to make it so someone could look at the ID, oh, I know who those three kids are. So with this, we say ten is, or more is what it takes to call it out. So that's why we have several, you see, and less than ten. But as far as what the students like is, those two columns, the one where it is comparable and highly capable participation. We see a pretty large gap of about five percent of students with I E Ps are involved, uh, enrolled in a highly capable program. About sixteen percent of the general population. So the big gap is part of what we want to address. Just look at the data, the next two columns, we have enough um students um needs to to be able to represent data over ten. So we see again, um, A P advanced placement program, like over doubling, a huge gap there. And honors, even more of a gap, five times as many, um, highly capable, about fifty percent or more higher. And um, the uh future educators, it's still a gap there too. So each of those cases, we can see where we're going to be to be addressing um these issues and 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 closing those gaps of participation opportunities.
I think, I think it's really encouraging that in the future educators that uh. You know, well, I know those students are pretty close, that goes well for, we want those to.
Yes, yes. And for our first year in the program, that's pretty good. We, once it catches on, kids hear about it, there'll be more, there's more participating, more enrollment in the future. Yeah, twenty, almost twenty percent of our students um who are eligible for that program, who are multilingual learners, are enrolled in the program, pretty great.
But if you look at that, people, or we can imagine as well, our homeless student, this year, a little bit under the globe, but at least it is representing that you guys have been tied here.
But that's almost, you know, within a margin, right? That's identical, our percentages of, yeah, students who are homeless enrolled in highly capable. So that shows that our staff also are doing a really good job of um, not letting students. Where they go after school, shouldn't have any relationship to the capable that are learning.
Yeah.
So I think that's pretty um, it's been a number of things over the years, that, I think it really, well, I was chatting with. Yeah, I was dealing with students experiencing all this, just having to see that graduation rate and pride, so good job. Big government in Jersey. They're two quality engagement coordinators.
Will there be data around maybe students who might be able to qualify or replace an A P honor or a high level orders that choose not to?
Um, you don't have data right now, but it seems like something we could work on to figure out how to um, compile that.
So for highly capable, I would say, we don't have a, want students to qualify unless a parent wants out, they're in.
Okay.
And at least last year, we had zero. And at least last year, we had zero parents opt out. So my guess is that that's a program that, or that's a service that very few people opt out of. Uh, in terms of honors and AP, we could certainly ask at the middle and high school what their um enrollment practices are, but at many schools, it's for AP in particular, it's if students choose to enroll. And so in a sense, all students are eligible. And it's about whether or not students choose to enroll. Some, obviously, some courses are a part of the sequence. And so if you maybe didn't take, if you've never taken French before, you're not going to sign up for AP French, right? That kind of a.
So I think about AP that has, that we all just did this number years ago was you automatically get enrolled in AP as long as you, you know, take in the courses. And so you have an opt-out. It's just opt-in. And so I don't think we do that, I'm not sure.
No, we don't do that, but it's been, it's been a, it's funny, I was a, so I was a president of the faculty who initiated that too as well. And I know Seattle raffled with that, so other districts do do that, or it's on some level. Uh, I actually, it's really interesting, the whole whole notion about AP, and I think the other thing that, especially my thing, my couple of student reps in the fall, there's not enough course offerings either. So that's one of the things, it's not just AP, but the number of AP classes or honors classes that we can share. But I also think, so to be honest, I think all AP studies, which doesn't really get to be qualified really well because of honors or AP class, that's a lot of high-level stuff. I mean, many of our classes are rigorous. Uh, and then some, we have to figure out how we get all our classes to be available. You know, if we're so focused on getting everybody in at AP class, we're more kind of moving for the the um core instruction now, you're running the level of that, you know, I think it's important to remember too that while yes, we want, we want young people, we want students to perform their best, whatever whatever the best is that they feel good about being, right? And it may not, like I said, was probably not someone who would have ever have just been like, yeah, he was in the class, right? You know, and I was just kind of an average student, and that wasn't bad, that wasn't good, it just kind of was and it was fine. Um, and so I think I just wanted to make sure too that, you know, we are creating the pathways for people to get there, and maybe there are several. And at the same time, that that is not really more by our money as a lead pathway. But I want to make sure that students do want it, have that answer, I guess. A lot of students opt out mentally because they feel like, they feel like, and I know I talk to students, I talk to students, we kind of believe in them and said that, like, we just don't want to give them the thought. I don't think they can do it. And I bet you can. So I do think, I think it's about offering a variety of options. And I think the question is, what what happens in my career? Where I have to really find a career in our classes? And so what does that look like in honors? What does that look like in studies? What does that look like in CTE? What does that look like in core? What does that look like? Because what I don't have, you know, I'm a student sitting in a classroom, whatever class we have. And there's, there's things that feel bored, that is not what we want to advertise. We want, we want to be challenging, we want to be, to be rigorous, we want to think, to be critical thinkers and problem solvers. And I I think there's some classes that can do that, even if they don't have a long designation on there. But I think we should get our, I mean, sure that all of our students have an opportunity for rigorous classes and pretty young instruction.
And how you design classes in different ways.
Which is why we're universal.
We have a little information here just about um which what we offer for AP, thank you to Ian. We have um four topics of AP classes. Um, one is AP psychology, we have one section that's twelfth graders. We have AP human geography, we have three sections of that at ninth grade. Um, AP calculus, um one section that's twelfth grade. And AP physics, that includes ten through twelve graders and then one section there. So just.
And I thought a little bit about your question, you know, third and fourth, certain AP community where they like the warm history credit, and so we made that matter very well, ten graders, eleven, twelve of them. And we offered kids to get an AP class in in the curriculum. And they actually have that experience so that they can then decide for themselves what they, what's an aptly.
And you said there's three, so so obviously that, it's probably less than five of them, it was five of them.
Yeah, that's um, yeah, it's it's, no, that's only one of the specific ten grades.
And we did get the background, but we would like to see more offers. All right, next slide. Do you have any questions around here?
So. Is it, I wonder why it was second um column on each two bunch moving for the general population, why it changes, change things, or was it different grade levels, general levels?
No, it's it's a percent, so, you know, uh students with IEPs are what, eighty percent of the general population of foster, high of foster high school.
And then how capable was only eighty-eight? Yeah, yeah. And the future educator program at the only high school. And then honors is middle and high, and then uh AP is only like. All right, make it up. Okay, that's.
Sure, so these are kind of our mid-year parts and next steps in this area. We talked about students experiencing homelessness, participating at roughly the same rates, which means that we need to focus our efforts, provide improved opportunities for other groups. It's not about deciding for students what they will be doing, but it's about providing them opportunities and the ability to be successful in those opportunities. Uh, and then of note, we at right now, we're just getting started at Foster High School, a hundred and fifty students who are low income or multilingual, we're receiving City of Tuculpa provided laptops to be better able to do some of these learning activities at home. Um, we don't send computers home with students at the end of every day, and so these are these groups of students that we're focused on in our strategic plan, we would like to extend their opportunity to learn, whether it's around doing research, doing homework, practicing the i-ready personalized lessons that they all have access to. Um, and then they could work on their high school beyond plans, on the Shallow platform, completing FAFSA. I don't know if any of you have, there's a brand new FAFSA this year, like all those things require internet access. And these are our students who have the least access to it. And so uh Mr. Baker's group and our community and families, since at Foster, have started out by identifying a hundred and fifty foster students. Um, they also have to live close to where the actual internet is provided. And so this is growing, and I'll turn it over to you to share more on that.
So so the concept is they have two laptops, one in home and one in school?
Yes.
Okay. So they don't have to travel back, of course.
You know, it was a lot problematic with charging, getting them, I mean, it was, yeah, it was. I have laptops, it's like the Chromebook, usually.
Yeah, only it only it um it attaches to the cell signal rather than Wi-Fi.
And again, to keep the, as long as they're in the district. Okay, so during the summer.
No. Yeah, we want to, in fact, to have to make sure all of our students have access, right? And so um what we've learned is many of our students who don't have Wi-Fi, don't have laptops at home, have to complete homework, keeping up with assignments, all of that. And so we are always trying to think of what else is a way, as a barrier, for this learning. And we just, we're trying to think of all the ways to reduce the barriers and again, I'm not there yet, but we keep trying to think of innovative ways to do that. Apparently, this is going to expand over time in more, so we're going to get more access.
Yeah, we're starting out at high school, but at middle school in Illinois, the the uh city has fifteen hundred of these of these Chromebooks that we can uh, that we can give out.
So this is a little better than I thought when I was talking to the, the old company that's doing this. They said it was only Google app, but it's it's more, it's more.
Yeah, they, they want it where they need to, yeah.
I mean, so it was, it was, it was a health, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But so um and the other thing about this is that it's, it's its own network. So if somebody's at home and they're maybe accessing some internet and watching videos, they're on whatever, they're definitely tapping in. And so these students, they're going to be able to have it on a laptop and send up a whole set of uh communication line.
Yeah. Right, the same part that is in, that are in the Chromebooks are unique to these Chromebooks.
Right.
So, yeah, so the uncle can't be sitting there on the same, you know, with a different, with a different.
The other problem is if somebody, you know, bothers to get off.
Any questions?
I'm curious, I guess you don't have that one, because you live in a non-area. Yeah, I'm assuming, but you got that one, I don't have a lot of one of these. These special Chromebooks? I don't know. Yeah, okay, because they're going, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And then we're going to, that's our data set, right? And then the city wants me, my department, to look at the outcomes. Um, we'll look at first semester when they didn't have them, and then look at second semester and see if there's any change in those students versus the general population.
Yeah, I love the difference, the students with their experiences. The other, the other thing that we're looking at, is that department students, you know, this is at home, but sometimes they're in an own environment where it's not necessarily conducive to study. And they just keep running around or whatever. And so, I mean, if we have to request students, for example, if we please open the library again on weekends, so I can have a class to study. So anyway, that's probably just for, you know, improves the the options for studying or something to do. But we usually see your, is it working out when you're thinking this? Yeah, yeah.
Because we have to see.
Right.
And I hope the growth indicators are reasonable, right? Now I'm starting to see some of that, so it's just semester.
Yes, but the other thing is, you know, some, you know, these are just a probably and a number of times, well, we don't believe in all of it, but some of our students might like to do this. So now is that going to change that a little bit? Okay.
All right, um, the next uh goal. Just to be, and I'm going to preface this with this is a really low-level goal. Uh, and yeah, the difference is more different. We have a monthly business in August. Uh, I guess in the past, we didn't really have an expectation of a district-wide training. So we made this intentionally as a way to create a goal around ensuring that every staff member in Tuculpa school is very received and raises training. And so that didn't happen before, it happened in August, we're going to kick off a whole game. Uh, we worked with the union, we worked with our leadership, uh, we even had our union leaders come and give you to an interview. And I will say, um, and we made this a part of our manual, we're basically going to turn the day off. Uh, it was it was counterpoint, so I definitely say that was the goal. And despite the fact that you always have every, at the end of the day, you know, people will take staff time off. Uh, but in terms of everyone who participated, we had everyone, so it was only a great day. We had our, uh, we had our uh rest service folks there, we had our social, social staff there. Uh, we had our teachers, our parents, teachers there, our principal, uh district staff there, you know, um. It was a really day, a really launch, and then it sort of set the tone for the rest of the year and the actions. We have a meeting every month as a team of leaders, with the equity leads, with the principals and the the district staff. It really happening, what does it mean to be an anti-racist organization? And uh we have talked about this very openly, and we have uh very clear with everyone that this is about not being embedded in the work. Um, what I think with my team is part of the goals, that we have goals. At the very bottom of their meeting, we sheeted says, what are your actions, and then their racist actions and what are your commitments for the year? We've talked about, we'll get updates on that. Uh, and it's part of the work uh that we're doing, and we now have to move on to the next page, which is the next step on this. Is we are uh going to be, we're not committing to updating the district policy uh and procedures. One of the things we want to do is really have clear procedures, what does this mean for one for equity? What does it mean in terms of insertion on philosophy? What does it mean in terms of equity work at school level? So what does this mean when we talk about being an anti-racist organization? What does that mean at every level of the system? And you have to have procedures and you have to have a community policy that reflects where we are. We all know that policies were developed ten years ago, fourteen years ago, so how much has changed? And actually changed politically along the path as well. And so we want to make sure that our policy is relevant of the best practices come from staff, come from actual work that we make. Uh, the other one is we're trying to do the mission that we have a priority, it's really clear, it's starting in the right time. Uh, and planning for some of the staffing levels and budget to support the work internally over the next three years. Uh, this, we have to prepare for this organizationally sound, physically sound, and actually is aligned to the values that we want to have in the system. And so that, it wasn't really clear about that, uh, especially regarding budget and budget priorities and making sure that um we're being very diligent. For example, I will just, I said this in the example this morning, uh staffing. You know, we know that sometimes our last hired folks have to be in our communities of pillar. And so what does that actually look like in terms of when we talk about budget periods and when we talk about staffing? And when we talk about student programming and support for our students that need them the most. So those are things that we're talking about, so that is committed, we need to, we need to, we need to raise this goal. Uh, so this goal won't have to change until the part of this monitoring uh for next year, because it was a little included to keep it committed, but we have to have more um more metrics to sort of identify what the district really wants to see in terms of um equity and the work. Any questions?
Fine, I guess on that, if you.
Yeah. That's the goal. And I don't think it's all day or half day, it'll turn on, quote unquote, and I'll be putting in terms, but that would be revisionist, it's something that happened to be obvious. And people were great, and it was really one of the questions, I'll share with the group, one of the questions that um they asked, where do you find racism within your school? And it was, I actually sat in one of the school teams' conversations around that, we had a really little discussion around because sometimes in institutions, we just do what we believe in. And it's really important we visit things from a different lens about it, and then we're having one of us, but that was the question, how, what's in your school, where do you see racism show up? And boy, I I I walked into a couple meetings after you all were sitting here and talking about them, and there was some very intense conversations. And I don't think anyone in that era had asked that question. So that was awesome. So uh, we have, and that's why including our customer management, because we have to be we have to be vocal there and we have to keep it intentional, because I would say, also, I always say my son is in special education, and special education is not designed for my airline, you know, my son is a pilot. Just a little. So how do we make sure that we um really think that through? And maybe plus, or maybe less within the laws and the legal ramifications. Because we know what we're going for, them, students like, who are very different, have a parent cultural experiences. We have to do work to make sure that we are really thinking about the work and uh really systemic way that actually does our kids. Okay. Questions? Uh, comment about budget sustainability? I uh wonder if there are any opportunities for specific funding that will go to support this work? Um, that has been, there have been very good opportunities or something. I will say that um I I'm meeting with the University of Washington. They have a grant that they've always been working with another district for the last two to three years. And they know that we are interested in moving the work to Tuculpa. It's an opportunity, and I said, yes. But I don't want that to happen. So um that that's kind of the type of, I was, we're very specific for our systemic organizational systemic changes for um equity work. So I don't want that, I know that maybe it was a support, I don't know, I guess. So um that was just an initial conversation, but I said, yes, absolutely. So. And I know we could, we actually, for other, for other institutions and things, so. Yeah. All right, any further questions? And I would say in this unit, I agree, that is the goal of all of the work that they're leading, it's about anti-racist work. And just anti-racist work, anti-culture, anti-racist work, anti everything. Uh, just anti-racist work, anti-culture, anti-racist work, anti, violence, right, and school safety. So that's their work, that anti-racist work, getting away the way that. All right, next one is on to Dr. Dina.
Sure, so, and every day, every day, our desired outcome is for our multilingual students to acquire additional skills, be successful in their mainstream classes. We've talked a lot already today about inclusion and why that matters. Um, this particular goal set is super aspirational, and it is around having a hundred percent of multilingual students who qualify for English language development services to meet the criteria. Set forward by walking, by the Washington State English and English Proficiency Assessment, within five years of their initial. That's a big multiple, the name of the test is WEDA. Even though it's all capital letters, it's not actually an acronym, so each of those individual letters don't mean something on their own. Um, it may have, when the WEDA consortium started way back, but right now, WEDA is just WEDA, so it doesn't, those letters mean nothing on their own. Um, and what I will also note is that Washington State has regularly changed its English language development assessment. In the last probably twelve years, we've probably had five, like, it's just, and so we were careful not, currently it's WEDA, it may not always be WEDA, like, we're just acknowledging that. Um, but one thing that has remained steady and is true of students in Taquilla as it's true in students in Washington State and across the country, is that when our students who are multilingual learners or that used to be classified as limited English proficient, when they become reclassified or they are no longer qualified for services, they're called fluent English proficient, whatever category you want to use. What we know is students who bridge that gap from qualified for services to no longer qualified for services, outperform their monolingual peers in most every area of academics. And so it does matter for our students, particularly in Taquilla, to attend their English language development so that they can move through and become reclassified or not, no longer qualified for services. We know that's a different, that's an outcome for them that we want to chase, which is why currently it's an aspirational goal of a hundred percent of kids to reach that within five years. We know if students aren't meeting that mark within five years, it becomes much, much, much more difficult for them to meet that particular mark. Again, doesn't matter which assessment you use or which state you're in, there are some commonalities here. Uh, we also, I want to acknowledge that the, um, US Department of Education has a new, um, I would say initiative. And their new initiative is that being bilingual is a superpower, and so it's something that they are looking at throughout the entire Department of Ed now around bilingualism.
It is.
It is, absolutely. Uh, and do you agree? So Taquilla again kind of folds well into that work and other, I would say, we're, there is much more acknowledgement now of the benefits of bilingualism. I would say generally speaking, and not so much through a political lens as maybe we would have seen in the past. So if we wanted to go to the next slide, what does that look like for us? In Taquilla of our currently active multilingual learners, and the term active means qualified for services. Because we know that there are more children who speak languages other than English at home than qualified for services. So these are just focused on those currently actively qualified for services students. Twenty-seven point eight percent of them have been receiving those services for greater than five years. And the majority of those kids, all of those years have been in Taquilla School District. So it's not new, these are not, we're not getting some of the, another term for those students could be long-term English learners, if you've heard that before. We aren't getting those long-term English learners from somewhere else, we are growing them, and so we want to, that's why we're, have a focus on changing our inclusionary practices.
I mean, it's hard, or that's specific.
So yes, would we update our, our strategic plan and goals? Yes, based on the WEDA assessment last spring. So when kids take that assessment, and, and I say spring, the assessment window actually opens here at the end of January and goes through the second week of March. So the annual English language proficiency window in Washington State is really in the winter. We don't get the reports until the spring, or actually this year, we didn't really get all the learns until the fall, but in any case, students are taking them right around now. Fifty percent of those students who exited had been receiving services for five or fewer years, and fifty percent of those students had been receiving them for more than five years. So it is still something that we want to attend to.
It's our goal.
It's still a goal. So, uh, we, doing, we're working on continued professional development for teachers. Um, we're specifically supporting something called the, um, Learning Lab Labs this year in our K through eight schools. And we, that's a series of professional learning for teachers dedicated to math, if you want to. While you can use strategies everywhere, if you keep a focus in one content, it will help us kind of develop our skillset. It's a lot around collaboration, um, co-teaching would be ideal, right? Where every classroom had two teachers in it attending to language and content development at the same time, and that's super aspirational and probably not budgetarily possible. That doesn't, however, mean that we can't support teachers to learn how to collaborate together for inclusion around language and content being developed simultaneously. Uh, at Foster High School, this year we are working on, um, with our teaching learning team on supporting teachers in many content areas, social studies, science, language arts, around working on collaborative, collaborative planning, all of those pieces. Co-teaching is a component, it's not the only component, and that is part of our inclusionary practices work as well. And then the last bullet point here is we are reviewing our literacy instructional practices for multilingual learners with our district MTSS team. As Chief Whitbeck shared, we are, we are working on revamping our systems of support, so they really do support all of our kids from a variety of different facets. Um, you all may have heard, it's been really hot news of the last year or so, the science of reading everywhere, and the reading wars are over, and we know what it takes to read. We also know that the majority of that research was done on monolingual learners, not on our English learners. There is research out about best ways to address literacy practices for those students, and so since there has been more of an emphasis on this science of reading now, there have been several national work groups that have come together to say, what does this mean for multilingual learners? And it matters, especially in Taquilla, because about half of our kids speak languages other than English at home, which means to what Director Ron was sharing before, it's not about keeping those things on the fringe, we have to center our work on those students and targeting universalism, as Dr. Pedrosa is talking about. If we center our work high quality instructional practices around what works for students who have those types of needs, we will definitely be able to support all of our students. Are there questions, comments about this?
Yeah, I mean, I have heard some studies that the science of reading actually does work a lot, and, uh, yeah, students, as well as all the students, certainly. So, I, yeah, uh, all of these are, everything, but I think.
Yeah, so it's not that.
Particularly the, you know, the, this, the set of things was to go away from phonics and kind of now is to more balance that, and English, yeah.
And the idea too is that particularly for multilingual learners, you don't want to save the, um, like, save the comprehension components for later. As happens with this, and what we don't, what we know doesn't work with how their brains is the presumption that phonics alone creates the meaning. Because if you put, like, C A T, if you put that together and create cats, if you don't know what cat is in English, like, putting it together is not alone in isolation is not the thing that's gonna help you become a good reader, it's gonna help you become a good decoder, but it might not help you become a good reader, which is someone who understands and all the critical thinking components. So it's not that the science of reading is necessarily, all the perks of it are inappropriate for multilingual learners, but the emphasis on some over others would, may look different, kind of like all the research out of the DIBELS assessment, I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but there's a component in the DIBELS assessment called the nonsense word, um, test, yeah, nonsense word, please, all that's a dinner, familiar with it? And for years and years, the University of Oregon has said, do not use that as an assessment with your multilingual learners, because it is, while it may be an indicator of struggle for your monolingual English speakers, it's not a good indicator of struggle for your multilingual learner. So there's pieces of, um, pieces of all of it, which will work for all students, but the bilingual brain learns to read. If they learn to read in their first language first, and then their transferring skills to English, that's one thing. If they haven't learned to read in their first language first, and they're learning first to read in a second language, um, it's another piece. It doesn't really have to be everything different for all kids, but it means we want to include all those components as we develop robust literacy instruction.
But we can use DIBELS for years, man.
So, but we don't rely on that subtest, I guess I would say, for sure.
Any questions about this topic?
I think I'm a little shocked that twenty-seven weeks, so our students have been for five years, and they're not, they're struggling with the English language being in the classroom six hours a day, five days a week. I'm, I'm a little disappointed, I should make, at the very least, it's on the lab, see that we're already taking certain steps, that, that even seem the, doesn't make any sense at all.
But when we got it, when we did the data, when we got the instruction, right, and how programs and interventions are done, which is why we have to make some drastic shifts. And, um, because we want to make sure that all our students are being the best opportunities. Um, as well, I'd like to say that, but, um, there's still work to do, because, um, you know, teaching is hard, right? It's super hard, it's super complex. Um, and, and there probably, and if you have, you know, remember, we've got seventy-five percent of those students have been successful, right? So we just want to make sure that we're, uh, we're really taking the best of all practices, and, oh, we will make the machines that we can, but also honoring the good work that's already been happening, including lots of areas where that's happening too.
Yeah, so I, I noticed that certainly, uh, years ago, when we have all these, um, on, you know, that are more than five years showing up at TOW. And so that review assessment, we was going on in the elementary school, that's where they're, you know, and so the reading instruction that we're talking about, that's in the elementary school, I think that's the key to fixing this.
Yeah. Do you have a connection between, uh, like, those twenty-seven, twenty percent dropout rates?
Um, our drop, our dropout rates for our students who are multilingual and Hispanics in particular are much higher than our other groups. So probably there is a connection there, yeah.
And then I assume that there's a tendency for, um, getting a sense of students reading, reaching their own language before we start the.
I wouldn't say systemically, because we don't necessarily have assessments in all students' home languages.
Okay.
Um, we rely a lot on ignorance with students and parents about their own proficiency, and to Director Larson's point about kids moving up through. Many, many of our students start with us in kindergarten, and so we wouldn't expect that they were literate in their first language if their first experience with schooling is when they get to kindergarten, or, um, or even preschool. Uh, I know this is not about our dual language program, but part of the reason Taquilla chose to, uh, approach dual language, and specifically with our Spanish speakers, because that's our largest group, is to embrace the idea of bilingualism and by literacy, so that we could support both becoming, becoming fluent in English should not be at the expense of maintaining your first language. Uh, our first group of kindergartners are right now, and we're just getting ready to do like the second window of assessment on them. Um, but there is a reason a program like ours, which is called the ninety-ten program, starts by teaching to read in Spanish, because Spanish is that's much more rule-bound, not like there's not a lot of rules in English, but letters have ones, sounds that accompany it, and so by starting with, uh, literacy instruction in Spanish, and that, that's a little less complex, it's more approachable for a wider swath of students. English speakers as well, if I don't have to learn that my vowels have several sounds, I just have to learn ma, mi, mo, mu, as I can remember. Um, so, all of those pieces, I guess, come together in some of the instructional shifts and the purpose for them that Taquilla has chosen.
It would be really interesting to study if you were at a more, if you're in five years, um, especially because all the data showing that are left in the students with largely certain stressors in all areas.
Yeah.
So.
And it also, if you start with, um, a language and you're, and you're teaching all the other subjects
Yeah.
in English, and you haven't mastered your English, then all of a sudden, you're kind of going, I am, oh, the other, because it wasn't, you teach a minor that you are noted with. Then all, you can keep up and get it, and then come together, which is what studies show happens.
Are there any questions from, um, the minutes or all?
I think, I mean, I think just focusing, I'm very similar, um, uh, the fact that we're, and what I have to do, what I have, like, to dumb, like, fully learning English takes some time, which is, in that case, not, not necessarily a bad thing. Because in my case, it, it took, it took four, four years, almost five, to like, then it took a while, um, M L L, but that would have been a benefit by the means. And now it's really, really bad, and they're more bad. So, um, I think, I don't think it's necessarily bad, or bad, because, um, um, receiving a couple of these, for services for one to five years, if what we're doing is also making sure that they're at home in their own, just as far.
But that's not, I think, it's still not a year in the, in the, it's not even the same year, so.
So.
I guess you, you do a lot of, but.
Is if we often do, we're hurting, there's a terrible set of strategies that provide a space, maybe, uh, where students are encouraged to practice and use their own language that you can use, would say.
So we do the word language assessment, um, for three times a year, and liaison will actually sit down with students in their group and work with them on, on, um, on, on the language, basically. Uh, they don't have a lot of time to do it, because they're twice, you know, so full, but, um, that is one option that we're doing, um, currently.
You can just like, something that's a little like, a once a week club, right, or battery where it's just like, no English spoken here, right? This is for you to come and be, I mean, also, like, talk about increasing some of the law, I mean, that to this, uh, other people.
I do see a lot of our teachers do, um, various word walls in their classrooms across the school district where they encourage their students to, um, whatever things might be up on the word wall in English, put it up in Spanish or Vietnamese or something else. So we're, and we're seeing, uh, like, some class meetings start the day with greetings in multiple languages, uh, to those. I mean, they're not necessarily academic focused, but like, how can we get to see new presence in the classroom of the student?
And, and that's why there's, there's some community groups, just for example, if you want to speak Arabic, I mean, the, we, the Moth, they teach you Arabic, and and so, I know we had, you know, some of our students have been strong in maybe speaking, but they did writing or something.
Yeah.
And then one of these other languages that we, you know, so then, but we made the other community to try and coordinate that kind of thing, so.
The thing comes first, then speaking, then reading, and, yeah, we took the book. I just think it's so important, we cannot, what you just said about that, your experience, cannot be experienced by our students, otherwise we are just white watching. And that's not where I want to be, but, well. And also I want to make sure, I want to make sure that all of our students, whether, you know, they don't speak English, but I remember you telling me one time about, you think we're using mathematics, right? And not knowing that, not having your educators or your school really know that about you until later on, which that should never happen either. So it's all not just about language, it's about what we believe about the, right? And what we believe, uh, people know within their language, because they definitely know English. I think that is what we, after, there's a lot of people that have their educational complex, and it was a lot of law and church folks, and a lot of people who are doing really good work, and, but we have to, and now it says that we, we think some of this, right, we do some of this differently, and I think, um, that's what we're dedicated to kind of do. I want to know the next slide, I have a few more questions on it, because I was asked about this one, to start incorporating this one in the past. Um, so it's much, I like, so these are some of the grants and funding that we use for these specific goals. Now, not all, for, now we do state, but at the state transitional, we're around T I P, that is, I'm definitely the, the goal against. Uh, this is the type of, we, we, we use a three-year contract to share how we can pay for, you know, the measures for some of the instructional materials or instructional development for these specific goals. The one on top was the fact that we expect continually to receive, so I don't see many of the ones around this goal being in jeopardy, however, I guess, we're definitely clear. Uh, we do pay many of our outside contractors, your S R funds, as you're not just reminded of that sunset in the first of twenty-twenty-four.
Uh, we do pay many of our outside contractors, your S R funds, as you have to remind of that sunset in the first of twenty twenty four. And examples are that, like, two examples is the long partners, which is our key partner that has all of our work around behavior, discipline plan, including our professional development. And our people can be considered a contractor and their recent professional development could go to, um, and it was actually, I think, far well over a hundred thousand dollars for each of those contracts that we've done. So not a small, it's not a small amount of money, it's a significant amount of money. And, um, and so that's why when I say we were, for example, when we had people, some systemic, uh, systemic organizational shifts and decide how we're gonna continue to work, right? Uh, because we want to have a hundred fifty thousand dollars, that, uh, even if I wanted to do a little bit, right? It's, it's all, uh, it won't be at the levels that you can oversee this year or the last three years. So I just wanted to put that out there, that will lead to the different partnerships that are in jeopardy, where our conversations with those, uh, people coming to see where, and social partners, but, um, because I mean, we won't be working on them, it just will be a much lesser amount than what we're doing this year, so, uh, that's why we're really encouraging long partners, we're really getting this, our school and, and, and taking, uh, a lot of professional level entertainment, coaching with their teachers to kind of build those combinations, so that we can continue to support as we go on, so.
So, I'm scared, though, any other outside of current, what is your path?
They are an agency that we contract with for, um, some of our special education staff.
Back to healthcare, the same? And put her there, I believe, the same?
Correct, yeah.
And, okay, so always, I know, stepping stones? Okay, so most of these are.
Yes. Are there any questions about this? Yeah, so I think, okay. Well, that's it for this presentation, uh, we've had a little time, let's a little bit of next piece on highly capable. I said I had a capable at the end of this, because we did ask for a more touching comment. And, uh, that's a part of one part of our goals embedded, and that's on the top of this strategy.
So we can go to the next slide. We've been talking about street angle all afternoon, highly capable bits. Not just equity and empathy events around expectations and excellence, we want students to be engaged and being engaged in their learning, we want to build relationships, all of that, so this is just another, um, the, we use these equity analysis questions from our toolkit in when we guide our discussions around highly capable in teaching and learning, when we're guiding the work that we're doing. Um, who are the underrepresented groups? We're going to talk about that a little bit today. Um, are we worsening existing disparities? Um, we have a highly capable review team this year because we want to, we want to stop some of the disparities that we've been seeing. So in order to do that, we need to engage in some study and then make some recommendations for change. Um, the highly capable review team is in one way of incorporating stakeholders, it's not the only one. Um, what other barriers are we seeing to equitable outcomes and how to mitigate the negative impacts and address them? We're working on that. Uh, just one side note, each year we do need to bring forward to the school board a plan for approval. If you remember, we ended up bringing that last break, just today I was notified that O S P I is now ready to tell us what they expect in that plan. So you'll be seeing me again soon, um, in the next week or so, I'll be learning from them exactly what that means. But we still, they've been undergoing their own change process, which has impacted our ability to break, or achieve so far. So you might wonder what are some currently, what are currently happening for our students who are highly capable? We have students who are highly capable at all grade levels in Tuck Willa School District, and the current services for them at the elementary level, we have what's called a cluster grouping model, that was, um, that was a model that was adopted prior to me uh, coming to Tuck Willa, so I don't know the why, but I know the what. Um, and what that means is that students who are qualified for highly capable services in the elementary school should be grouped together in groups of like four or five in a classroom, and so that they can do when the teacher is doing differentiated instruction, the teacher can tailor some of that to those groups of students. At the secondary level, as we talked about today, there are honors courses and advanced placement courses. They're not solely for students who qualify for highly capable programming, but they are, they are the way that we serve students who are um, eligible for highly capable programming. Next slide, please. Uh, this has a lot of colors on it, first, you can explain what everything means, and I'm going to ask you to tell me what you think and see. Over three years, what do our demographics tell us? So the bars tell us the percentage of students who are highly capable, qual- qualified for highly capable services in the, um, various school years, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then the one that says twenty-four is for the twenty-three, twenty-four. The highly capable identification window happens in the, both the winter and the spring, students qualify for the next year of service. The dots represent what's our total population in that. So when we look at our Asian students, for example, in twenty twenty-two, forty-one percent of our highly capable students identified as Asian and our overall district percentage hovered around twenty-five percent. So that, but all of these pieces in one slide, take a look. So my question to you is, what do you notice, if anything, about any disparities here?
Spans, here's our gross student population, and then box comes in, and the other ones are over.
Anything else, people nervous?
Uh, the trend, so, you're gonna use it out of the static, it's the trend is up. We keep going that way.
The percentage of overall population down, but, so, I, I, we're getting closer to the, the, that, that, this.
So trends are slightly up, but relatively, they remain relatively constant. And I bring that up to say, this, this current, the two bars here, the green bar and the like orange bar on the screen represent what Tuck Willa accomplished in terms of identification after making some significant changes to our own internal assessment procedures. And so even though between the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year and moving forward, we made uh, big changes in how we identified students, we're, um, screening all students, we use new assessment tool, the um, negliary assessment, and coupled that with local measures, looking at our I-ready as well. Even though we made some specific changes, we haven't necessarily seen the changes to disparities that we were hoping to see. It doesn't mean to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but it does tell us that now two years worth of data, and we're going into our third year of that. We'll talk about what some, maybe some changes to our process may look like.
There's very, students can define in multiversal students. Can you get a, 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 that maybe?
If you just segregate the events between primary levels and like in the L A level versus secondary, do the, does it look the same, like, the same as one?
Yeah, multiversal is a, that's tricky category, first of all, you're self-identifying and second, um, the question is, which multi-raised value, potentially?
Do they self-identify every time you do assessment?
No, the demographics pull from our student information, that's up, yeah, so whatever families have, I, when they register for school, families identify their students, yeah. So we go to the next slide, you've seen these two pieces of data previously um, around how did our students who qualified for highly capable services do on English, language, arts, and math? Is there anything that jumps out to you here? I know it's kind of small. So the blue are the students who qualify for highly capable services, and the red are students who don't qualify for them.
That they're doing much better?
Not surprised.
Well, that's essentially us, of our, um, non-competitive rate compared to those, so it's kind of compare.
Yeah, lots to dig into here, we talked earlier today about the school to school improvement plans, this is another way they can slice some of their achievement data as they look at what their strategies are. And you'll see here in general, our math scores tend to be lower, which is when we talked with multilingual, why we identify that labs and using that content, like part of this data is incorporated into that. Let's go to the next slide. What are our procedures? We are, uh, annual cognitive and academic assessment of all kindergarten through fourth grade students in the negliary. One of the things we adopted a few years ago, and we continue to use are local norms for that assessment. It's not a standard-based assessment, and so not every student could achieve an A, so speaker meet the standard. It's a norms assessment, so the average student score is at the fiftieth percentile, and then you move are you at the ninety-ninth percentile, that means your score was better than ninety-nine percent of others, people who took the same test. Um, it does not mean that you got a ninety-nine percent accurate on the test, it just means your score. If you were at the thirteenth percentile, it means you scored better than thirteen percent of other students who took the same assessment. It also does not mean that you only received a thirteen percent accurate score. So that's a difference between cognitive assessments and academic assessments. Because in an academic assessment, we want all students to be able to meet the standard. And on this type of an assessment that use a, uses the old bell curve, um, you're never going to get everyone in a one group.
So, so that's specific to, like, the Tuck Willa, or is that the individual?
Local norms, yes, we actually local norms to our individual schools. And so what we're looking at is the ninety-ninth percentile within your school, not the ninety-ninth percentile nationally.
Okay, that's right, probably good, it's ninety-nine percent.
Not necessarily, but just, we actually look at the ninety, everyone who scored at the ninety-second percentile and higher. And we identify the ninety-second percentile based on how students at that school did, not how people did on the ninety-second percentile nationally. That is one strategy that researching gifted education and what O S P I has encouraged school districts to consider doing if they're trying, attempting to, um, reduce disparities in the identification of students. Because the first step towards receiving services is identification. Um, and then we have school-based teams who review multiple data points for identification. The, one of the steps is the negliary assessment and the other component, because you have to what you do is use this cognitive assessment, which is the negliary, it's a non-verbal assessment, which is why it was chosen for Tuck Willa. And then you have an academic achievement assessment, so all students in Tuck Willa take the I-ready, so we look at their I-ready assessments in addition to that. Even if you've already qualified for highly capable services, you continue to take the assessment every year, it doesn't mean you don't qualify anymore, but that's how we know that our local norms truly are norm of all the kids in that particular grade level. Once you qualify for highly capable services, you maintain that qualification all the way through, from twelfth grade. If a family chooses not to participate, or students choose not to participate, they just have to tell us, and then we remove that from them. But the assessment is done for all students in grades K through four, that matches, um, Washington State made some changes to what it required by law, and Tuck Willa was already in alignment with what those changes were. And so, and that, and that's a good, that's a good thing for us, we didn't have to change again, um, I know we've had a lot of change here. So that's our identification procedures.
Check for bias or income, I mean, is it? Is it gonna?
So it's better than like the old cogat? Not as much because of, especially with the non-verbal components, yeah.
Well, if you call the Delker, there's a lot of these, so the Delker is also in the team. So if it's based on Delker, it is biased.
But the assessment questions themselves have less bias for income and culture than the cogat or other assessments, so, yeah.
Not perfect.
Yes, not perfect.
But it is a better assessment of the world, the number of components, which probably will is probably, that's like increases in the area, right?
Go to the next slide, so like I spoke about before, we have a highly capable review team this year, made, it was, it went out to everyone in the school district who wanted to participate, and we ended up with staff from both elementary and middle levels who wanted to be on our team. Um, so we revise our identification procedures. What I need to say there is the written procedure that was accompanying our policy did not match our actual procedures that we were, had been doing for the last couple of years, so we made sure our documentation matches what we're actually doing with students. Um, we surveyed staff about the highly capable program, initially we only received eleven responses to that survey, but with an additional push, we're over sixty now, so that's, will help us, what's currently in process. Um, we're developing some highly capable professional learning based on survey results. We can't expect teachers to try different instructional strategies if we don't help them learn some of those instructional strategies. And then, as we talked about with the, uh, identification components, we're developing some new protocols for school-based identification teams to utilize in the spring, because it's not one score. It's not that if you score at the ninety-second percentile in your local norms on the negliary, you automatically qualify for high cap services. That is what we are trying to avoid, is the ones, the single score, single domain component. It is a multi-modal approach or a multiple data points approach, and so some of the protocols, we're going to ask school schools to engage in this year in terms of reviewing students from multiple lenses. We're hoping a result in some less discrepancies around race. And our next steps also will be to identify recommendations for any modifications to the cluster grouping model at the elementary school. I would say that's a pretty hot topic for people who are interested in highly capable is the cluster model, what we should be doing. If we should be doing it, are we doing it in the way in which it's intended, like, there's lots of layers there. Um, but we want to continue working on our professional learning and, um, student identification, and then move into, if we're going to make that saying we will, but if we decide to make recommendations, this team will be able to make some recommendations for changes at the elementary level, so that's the work that we're engaged in currently.
How past the, uh, cluster, like classrooms, how have we been? Like, I can't remember, the result wise, but I think this is, and here, we're doing.
So the, when we look at the data, it's pretty scattered. I would say in terms of if the students in the cluster model classrooms are outperforming or underperforming students who are not in the cluster model in general. We've seen that our highly capable qualified students are generally outperforming everyone else. But as far as what that impact is on the rest of our system, right, because nothing happens in isolation, um, we haven't, we haven't seen anything definitive one way or the other, like, oh, the cluster model itself made a good change here, or, oh, the cluster model itself was a negative impact for other students.
And to manage that cluster group model, it's like, you think students are different who levels in one classroom?
Yeah, so it's, um, it could be, you could say it's similar to tracking in that in your third grade, you would have all of your highest performers in one classroom, and you were made, let's say, mid performers on an academic system, and another, and your lowest performers in another classroom, that this particular model advocates for that, so it's more impactful of all students, not just those who um, are qualified for highly capable services. I would say that fidelity to that type of classroom placement practice is scattered across the district as well. And there are going to be a lot of, like, I'm not a proponent or not a proponent of that particular model, it's the one that was identified, and so it is the one that Tuck Willa is currently using.
Just don't know, like, what levels, what group they're in, right?
No, teachers, yeah, teachers don't. I, so in general, in elementary schools, at least in my experience with student class placements, students don't, aren't part of the discussion that teachers or administrators have when they're placing students in classrooms. Now, what families may say to their students if they qualify for highly capable services, that happens at home, it doesn't happen at school. Um, so, but a teacher does, we do not say, we do not advocate that teachers say to their student, oh, you are in such and such group, or X group over there. It's definitely worth looking into, there's a, there are other models of gifted, um, education supports.
There's a lot, the state has specific, um, so the state and the, our studies were pretty modest around what we that we, every district is required to identify students, and also required to have some type of services for students, that is by law. What that looks like is What that looks like is different, uh this very specific, and so, um. Okay, I'm going to do this for five years, so, uh it's the, the state having identified certain practices, the cluster model is just one of many practices. My ask of the team is to look at this, what maybe the elements.
Yeah.
Yeah, the inclusion elements, right, they're about that inclusion, and what does that actually look like for all of our kids? That's why I think it's super interesting about those other students, at their benefit around that model and how we cluster classrooms. And and so that's the, that would be the goal, because for me, we're going to do a, a push for inclusion for all of our students, that also means our met. So that's the, that would be the, I'm actually, Dr. Dino's, we know we're going to, you know, that conversation now around it. Um there would be some, I would be to come back and explore our values around that.
And when we think about our uh the equity questions, like. If we look at this model, like what disparities are we maybe deepening by choosing the model? Or what disparities we may maybe be alleviating by choosing this type of a model, but. Everything we do in Tuckwillah, we have to think about what are the unintended outcomes as well?
Yeah, because years ago, there's this, you know, third grade classroom, when there was a lady speaking, the student who was super smart, she was highly capable. And there was this other student who just came in, the yellow, and then she just kind of latched on to the. And started picking things up, I mean, I could just see, she was a little stunned, picking everything up, about two things. And so the, the impact of that on the other students is really important.
Yeah, and so that's why, that's why I'm having this really, really important, helping us. Restate maybe, and then think about um other challenges or other programs that you provide services to the student.
I do think that the changes that Tuckwillah's made to the identification procedures over the last few years are the right place to start. And now that we're working on refining those, now it's time to take a look at what programming. For what services and how do we want those services to look for kids?
Um I'm just appreciating, I think, this very, very, this is exciting, I mean, it's just, really getting, really getting, right? I know there were clearly a lot of stuff in model, where a lot of. There were just a lot of feelings, and it came up, you know, justified, probably, um around the implementation of it and. Um so you're really invested in, you may have a more exact responses, and then really bringing that team. Or hopes into the teams, really, to turn on those recommendations are for itself, I just appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
All right, folks, um I'm going to apologize that we're not going to be able to get into the, the discipline data, um which really, for those of you that are trying to put that together. Um uh but I, I'm also really grateful for this. Discussion, I thought it was very important for me, I thought it was really very, so, again, these are the ways I. At, I mean, a lot that we, we structure, uh these sorts of students, really be able to dive in, uh to these, uh I think, that way. I'll probably visit a discipline report at another time, um. Yeah, so for January. Yeah, we can do that, we can do that, um and.
January twenty third?
Yeah.
That maybe is a free.
Oh, okay, okay, well, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that on, um and then of course, there's anything, anytime that anyone wants to ask her or get some. You know, any of our students do, um, we'll check that.
Yeah, I just want to just quickly, this data did, was talking about the uh. This one data was started, but we also, like, you know, so my understanding is they're splits. And the reason that I was asking about split data is that it captured more, more detailed stuff, like, you know, there's an incident, where did it happen, you know? Uh and that makes the difference, I mean, I agree, they turned like, you know, I mean, did it happen, did it happen, I mean, recessed, did it happen, of course, it did happen at school and. And based on some of that uh knowledge, you may design, I think, if you're done, it would be something, a lot of incidents were happening in recess. So they kind of focus on recess and did their stand, so. Anyway, I, I mean, I, the answer is probably, well, we're looking at that, that's fine, but I think it does, can have some implications that the district, I don't know, for where we decide to put resources. If you focus, if you have more like it's not where these just, these issues are happening. You know, the better you are able to design, you know, solutions to deal with it, so, you know.
Okay.
Any final things on the end, what?
I wonder, is it just someone that, just putting that, you know, cutting off, so. When, when, when we, when it's pretty packed, when's the next?
Um potentially, uh the work. That we can do all the things, potentially the um work session, I worry. Um so the same work session then?
Saying now. Doesn't have to be a work session?
No, definitely not, um so again, it could be a very meeting, we'll, we'll, we better interview maybe tomorrow, um where we can, see what we need to put out to.
I think next suggestion, the order retreat on the twentieth. It's Saturday, we have a lot of things to prepare, but it is a possible.
Yeah, one of the things I've heard of more lately, having to have these folks come in, um but we, we use our little bit, yeah. Let's talk, yeah, let's, we have observed, and we're, so, okay, great, uh we will, we'll.